Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 14th Work Session and Public Hearing of the Penfield Planning Board.
Might want to check your date.
May or May?
May 12th, I'm sorry. May 12th, 2022. The sunshine is killing me. I'm not used to it here in Rochester, New York. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Sure.
Hetske?
I think I am here.
Aiken?
Aiken here.
Kenauer?
Kenauer here.
Tidings?
Tidings here.
Sangster?
Sangster here.
Weiser?
Weiser here.
Dubruck?
Dubruck here.
Gray? Here.
Okay, we have minutes from April 14th. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them. And so...
Tidings motion to approve.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Doug, you want to start going through our tabled applications?
Yes, sure thing. All right. Application number one, the Pathstone Project. Staff is still working through our final legal determination. I'm hoping to have that out to the applicant and you guys here shortly. So until that, I don't know if any discussion's really necessary. We can continue table.
Right. Do you want to move to table?
Sure, I'll move to table.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken? Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Let's skip over number two and move to number three. We'll do number two after the hearing.
Yep. So for application number three, since we last met, the applicant has submitted a revised site plan that indicates the site data as, you know, discussed with the board in their determination for non-residential calculations. So they've provided that, as well as they provided an elevation of the revised common house as part of that initial discussion, or what we called Scenario 1. The common house was going to become a two-story, two-story structure with additional space on the second floor for commercial use. So they submitted that for your consideration.
The materials, is that vinyl? What's the materials are on that?
I believe it's a, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, it's a composite, I think it's composite wood.
Okay.
I'll have to go back and take a look. There's a material data, a material sheet. That's something I might ask for clarification on.
Anybody have any comments on it, on the common house? Elevations, architecture?
What's the white?
Oh, that's, so there's...
It's the part where you walk through. Yeah, okay.
Where we, maybe we took the drawing and cut it, sliced it.
Gotcha.
Yes, the common house was set up sort of as two buildings connected by, you know, common roof and it'll be a common second floor.
That's a pass-through, essentially?
Yep.
And that's, I am assuming, metal roofing?
Brown shingles.
Brown shingles?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. It has a vertical, but...
If you would prefer to see what you're saying.
Yeah, Bill, do you want to, just quick, need your exercise.
Sorry. Here.
This is good.
It does look like standing seam, I apologize.
Let me just get material.
It's hard for me to read this.
I would say that's a brown, standing seam.
Standing seam, yeah. Gordon steel roof. Reclaimed barnwood siding. Wood fascia stain. Anybody have any comments on this? I'm...
No.
We're just waiting for it to go to zoning, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but in the meantime, I mean, if we have any comments on the, on this, okay. Kelly?
No questions.
All right. Duly submitted, thank you. And we're waiting on the outcome of the zoning board.
Waiting on the outcome of the zoning board and staff's working on finalizing our draft secret documentation, as well as a draft approval resolution for your consideration.
Okay.
Once we have that, we'll provide it to you.
All right. Somebody want to move to table?
Yeah, I'll move to table.
I'll second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to splash car wash. At the end of our last meeting, the board had moved to have staff draft approval resolution. So we've submitted for you guys the draft approval resolution, as well as completed Part 23EAF.
I think, I think we're basically ready to go on this. Staff, any of, staff have any other outstanding concerns?
So I talked with the engineers, I talked with the engineers today. They're still going through the engineering documentation. So far, all they have are minor technical comments, things that can be worked out post approval.
Okay. And then I noticed the road behind it is already repaved. That was, it had been kind of a concern. That looks brand new. I was there this week, so...
That may have been, so that portion of the property is not, that portion is not owned or controlled, so it may have been the property owner.
Right, but the, having that exit out onto a road not in good condition was a bit of a concern, and the road is, it's in good condition now, so...
Who owns it, 250?
I think...
So the section between 250 on the north side of this property is split between splash car wash and the owners of 2130 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. I don't know who that is off the top of my head. The, is it Marion Trow? And then on the east side is Marion Trow, the Trow property. They've, runs east, north, south, on the east side of a lot of those properties, from sort of McDonald's down to where Burger King is going in now.
So between this and any other applications, hopefully, we're going to get that whole area fixed up for, is usable, I guess, right? I don't know how far it was fixed.
Right.
Good, good, good.
Okay. Anybody else have any concerns on this?
No.
Okay, somebody want to move for the EAF?
I'll move to prepare the EAF.
I'll second.
Sign it.
Sign it, approve, sorry.
I'll second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. And we have approval resolution, all set to go, so I guess I will move to approve.
I'll second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right. Build it and they will come.
Thank you, appreciate it.
For clean cars.
Cars, okay.
All right. Taco Bell.
All right. Taco Bell and Home Outlets. So at the end of our last meeting, this was another one we had discussed, they'd submitted revised plans. So they'd submitted revised plans, most of the revisions were born out of conversation with the planning board and conversation with the zoning board. You know, so the biggest change was some striping on, and some site circulation updates. Staff has prepared at the board's request, Part 2EAF and a draft approval resolution. We did make a note in the resolution, they will be going before the zoning board on May 19th for special permit for signage. They missed the deadline for that, based on some discussions early on in the application. So they'll be going before the board, before the zoning board on that for, I believe it's the secondary pylon signage on the site.
Okay.
Did they answer the Monroe County DOT's remarks, they're all set with that?
So yeah, so county DOT, they're working, they've worked through that, and they provided, county DOT provided approval on, through their traffic impact statement for study. They are still working with state DOT. We've been getting correspondence back and forth between state DOT and the applicant, and engineering staff is comfortable that any traffic concerns between state DOT can be handled post-approval.
Okay, and they mentioned in their memo that the developer is going to be required to contribute a fair share of the cost, design, control, and maintain the traffic signal if and when necessary?
Yep. So at some point in the future, so they've, based on comments from the DOT, they have made the Creek Street entrance come out directly opposite of Sovereign Drive, so that in the future, if the county determines it's appropriate that a traffic signal be installed at the intersection of this property and Sovereign Drive on Creek Street, the applicant would contribute to that.
Okay. And they requested the town make the condition of project approval, you're aware of that?
Yes, and we can, yes, and we include notation on that, that they have to comply with any county requirements of the Department of Transportation.
Did we ever receive, I may have missed it, the responses to the PRC comments? In other words, like 42 pages of PRC comments, is that all set?
We're all set with that, and that's something that we'll work through them, with them. Any additional comments that we have, we'll work through them. Post-approval, we do that as part of our pre-milear process.
And the landscaping, you know, there were some concerns on landscaping in both parcels?
They are providing, so I do remember there being a comment about providing landscaping on the Home Outlet property. They do have a landscaping plan that shows they will be planting along, generally along the south, southwest side of the property, as part of their planting plan, and on the southeast side. There is not much more green space on that property to plant in.
Okay. And we're all set with the variants that I think they're, they were all approved except the signage?
Yep.
So, whoa.
Yeah, all their area variances were approved.
Town staff's concerns, I'll put the rest over that, the inside, the traffic type situation, all that stuff?
Yeah.
Those variances. Okay. Okay, there's a lot to remember and add into that approval, if we're going to go ahead with it.
Okay. Everybody good with this?
Okay, so I'm going to make the motion to...
Prove the EAF?
Yeah, prove the EAF.
So for Taco Bell, we're going to start with Taco Bell, because we'll have to take two separate votes, Taco Bell and Home Outlet. So EAF for Taco Bell?
Yeah, Taco Bell. So just make sure that the motion is for Taco Bell.
Right, okay, I make the motion for the EF?
For Taco Bell.
For Taco Bell, correct. Tidings.
I'll second that.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Okay, make the motion to approve Taco Bell.
Okay. And I second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, Home Outlet?
Home Outlet, I make the motion to approve the EAF for Home Outlet. Tidings.
Kenauer, second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye. Any issues, counselor?
None from me, sir.
Okay. Yeah, they look.
So now the approval for Heritage, or for Home Outlet?
Home Outlet, I make the motion to approve.
We just did the EAF, right?
EAF, yes.
So...
Tidings.
I will second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Got yourself a building.
All right. Next tabled application, 2730 Atlantic Avenue, Heritage Christian. We spoke with the applicant recently, they've requested to be tabled until your next meeting on the 26th, post zoning board.
So are they going to provide the stacking diagram that we had asked for? Because I didn't see that in the drop. I was hoping that I...
They have not provided that, they have not provided that to date. I can discuss, we can discuss that with them further, but at this time, they have not submitted that.
Okay. That would be something that I think would be helpful to have. So, I don't know, do you want to, do you have any other comments on that at the moment?
No, not at the moment.
So, since this is your applicant, do you, as part of the tabling resolution, may we ask for that?
Yes. So...
The stacking?
Yes. So...
What's that?
The stacking?
Yes.
Is that what, the stacking diagram?
Yeah, diagram that shows, let's say, there's buses backed up or something, and, or somebody's slowed down to pull into the driveway. How many, let's say, how many buses or vehicles, buses really, could get behind that before they're in the middle of the intersection?
I mean, I think we could ask them potentially to indicate on their site plan distances. The stacking may be, asking for a stacking diagram may be getting a little outside of the scope of review for this type of development.
So the, there are concerns from the board and the public about the south driveway. I'm guessing that somebody could find a clipart of a school bus and a short shuttle bus and scale it and, you know, do a screen snip on a drawing, put it in Excel, scale it up, and put the freaking bus on top of it. How hard is that? Is that super hard? It would, to me, answer some questions that people have.
It's something I can, we can ask for.
So if they say no, they say no, but I don't think it's a big ask.
Were there any revisions to move that? I'm trying to remember away from the...
At this time, they haven't submitted. They, at the public hearing, they stated that they could potentially move that secondary access, or the second access further north, about five to 10 feet. At this time, we haven't received any of those plans.
Okay.
All right.
So motion to table pending...
And ask, yeah, I would ask for, I want to ask for that.
Okay. Motion to table and pending a stacking diagram?
Tidings, second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
Moving on. 1838 Penfield Road, Verizon Wireless. So at this time, we are currently working in tandem with the zoning board to, on hiring a consultant to provide additional review for both boards. Zoning board's looking at citing and RF calculations, and the planning board has requested at the last meeting, that visual impact study be included as part of that. We have reached out, I believe, at this time, we've reached out to four separate consultants to have, to have recused themselves as conflict of interest. They do, they do work for Verizon Wireless. We are, should hopefully be getting a draft scope from one, potentially tomorrow, and another one that we just recently reached out to. Hopefully, we'll have some more information on that for you guys at our next meeting, but for right now, we're still trying to finalize that process.
Okay. So we'll continue tabling until we get that.
Move to continued tabled, based on the outcome from the consultant report.
I'll second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to Penfield Farms. So, you know, we met with the applicants at your last work session, had a lengthy discussion with them. Since then, we've heard back from Monroe County through the DRC process. They provided mostly technical comments and no real concerns. We also reached out, since this property does, is adjacent to the town line with the town of Pittsburgh, we reached out to the town of Pittsburgh for comment. At this point, we have not heard back with any comments. Based on our conversation at the last meeting, staff has prepared a Part 2EAF, Part 3EAF, and a draft approval resolution for your consideration.
Right. And I see they have submitted landscaping plan with shrub plantings. It took me a little bit to, you know, they're not all, not every single one, it's more the detail that's shown as a representation.
And, and so some of, so the ones that are, you know, sort of, they do include both existing landscaping, as well as proposed additional landscaping, so that the biggest changes in these ones were, they did do, you know, a call-out box there showing sort of typical foundation plantings that'll be provided for each unit, as well as the overall planting plan that does include some minor changes. So one of them is they're providing additional visitor parking at the end of the road. The roads are not very wide, so they're providing some additional visitor parking at the end of the road, adjacent to this, to the next mobile home park. So to buffer that parking in the headlights from shining into the neighboring park, they've provided some additional buffer landscaping on the east side, as well as a couple of extra trees to supplement the existing trees on the south side of the property, adjacent to Linden Avenue. So to sort of block visibility and sound and light from Route 441.
Right. So, you know, I think that they've, personally, I think that they've really provided what we've asked them to provide. Does anybody have any issues moving forward with this?
I just had one question about the Department of Planning, Monroe County, the request that we make sure send the adjacent municipalities?
Yeah, so like I said, we reached out to, that we sent it out, we sent the plans and all the application materials to the town of Pittsburgh. They did respond, but they haven't provided, they just said thank you, they haven't provided any additional comments at this time.
Because I know they had this memo, they were, maintain a healthy vegetation, buffering of preserved trees and shrubs along the stream edge, limit tree cutting to removal of large branches that fall in the stream and divert stream flow and cause erosion.
So that...
That's what I've been taking care of.
So that's not, not as much of a concern for, you know, this phase, if they continue doing redevelopment, we'll look at it in the future, but, you know, if you were to look here, zoom out at this property and do a, you know, a 10,000-foot view, you know, this, you know, they're sort of doing the front quarter, maybe, of the property as part of this redevelopment.
Right.
The property continues further back. Towards the back, it drops off, there's a pretty steep drop-off down to Allen's Creek in the back, so they're not, there's no homes down there, it's just the creek bed, so they're not...
It looks good. I spent a few hours out there with the guys the other day, which were very helpful, showing me around, and Steve and Richard over there, they're the Onsite managers, and were very helpful over there, explaining what's going on, and so just wanted to make sure that everybody's on the same page, because I know there's been a lot going on over a period of time. So hopefully, they'll get, you know, working on that and finish it. They actually looks pretty good, there's a lot of stuff doing so. Looks like it's going to be cleaned up really nice, doing a nice job. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. You good?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, somebody want to move to approve signature on the EAF?
Tidings to approve.
I will second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right. And we have an approval resolution as well, so...
Tidings to approve resolution.
Kenauer, the second.
This one goes to Kelly.
Kelly?
Aiken, second, yeah.
You got to be quick around here.
Hetske? Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right. And we have an approval resolution as well, so...
Tidings to approve resolution.
Kenauer, the second.
This one goes to Kelly.
Kelly?
Aiken, second, yeah.
You got to be quick around here.
Hetske? Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right, we got two small action items, you want to try to take care of them before the public hearing?
We got three minutes.
Okay.
I don't know if we can get through all of them.
Okay. Do you want me to start with the quicker one, or?
Let's do the quicker one if we can.
All right. So we had a town board zoning amendment referral, 1788 to 1794 Penfield Road. They're located in the four corners. Back when we did some original rezonings late 60s, you know, a lot of times, we did zoning based on, from, you know, certain distance from center line, so this was one of those areas where we did that. So the zoning didn't really follow property lines, it followed the road.
So essentially, they want to make, we have two different zoning districts on the same parcel, and they want to make them consistent?
Yes. So it's four corners in the front, R115 in the back. They're requesting to rezone the back section of that property, make the four corners consistent on their entire property.
Does anybody have an issue with that?
No.
Okay, so I'll move to send a memo to the town board saying that we support the rezoning of that.
I'll second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Now, I think we should move into the public hearing. So...
We're going to do the pledge?
We will, but I'm going to wait till 7 o'clock. We have less than a minute to go. And right at 7, keep my phone on, make sure I know when it turns to 7. 7 o'clock, okay. Welcome to the May 12th public hearing of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. We have one item on our agenda. If you're, this is the first time, if you're unfamiliar with the process here in Penfield, this application is for site plan review, and the applicant will come up to one of these two tables. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. We have one item on our agenda. If you're, this is the first time, if you're unfamiliar with the process here in Penfield, this application is for site plan review. And the applicant will come up to one of these two tables. If you have a laptop and you want to plug in and quote-unquote "drive the bus," run your own presentation, you can do that. Or Catherine, our computer navigation whiz is here to do that for you if you so choose. We will listen to the application, and then the board will ask questions. Then, once that is done, we open it up for audience participation, any comments that people in the community have about the application. If you are watching one of the millions from home or around the planet and would like to comment, you can call at area code 585-340-8771. We have a bank of operators standing by to take your call. You can also submit online, website, penfield.org. And on the homepage, there's a link to this meeting, so you can just click on that and then submit your comments that way. So with that, Doug, please read our application for the evening.
All right. Application number one, TY Lynn International Engineering and Architecture, PC 255 East Avenue, Rochester, New York 14604, on behalf of McDonald's USA LLC. Requests under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval for the proposed construction of an additional drive-through menu board adjacent to the existing drive-through location, a small building addition and associated site improvements on a 1.12 acre parcel located at 1850 Empire Boulevard. The properties now are formerly owned by McDonald's USA LLC and Zoned General Business, GB. Application number 22P-0014, SBL number 93.02-1-23.2.
Are you here for McDonald's?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Doesn't really matter whichever one makes you more uncomfortable. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm Nate Bootsek, I'm with TY Lynn, representing McDonald's on this project. The project, as you guys explained, is located at 1854 Empire Boulevard in the Baytown Plaza. The project consists of pretty simple adding a side-by-side drive-through on the south side of the site and also a small building addition where the existing, south of the existing, drive-through window to relocate that existing drive-through window. It'll be probably about three feet wide by 10 feet long. The facade and everything will match what is there today, the colors, et cetera. And also, the project includes some concrete paving where we're doing the side-by-side, also a new separation island, menu board, some additional signage, signing and striping of the parking lot, et cetera. So that's pretty much the project. We are, as part of the project, losing 11 parking spaces. We do have 67 parking spaces on the site existing. That brings us down to 56. And our understanding, based on the code requirements for this use, there is 53 parking spaces that are required, so we meet the minimum. So that's pretty much the project. So if anyone has any questions, let me know.
Okay. Terry, you want to start us off?
Yeah, sure. Nate, my first question is like, what's the purpose of these new side-by-side, you know, adding another one, I guess you could tell me?
Drive-through lanes.
Yep. No. So McDonald's has been doing this for quite some time now. Basically, the purpose is, they have looked at tandems, the side-by-sides work the same way. I mean, you can basically order at the same time. It gets more, probably almost, they say twice as many through the drive-through. It's faster. So getting the orders ready, getting the service ready gets them through the lines much faster than, you know, one menu board, one order board. So my understanding, there's a need for this at this particular site based on the owner-operator. So that's pretty much it.
It's busy. I know that location very well. I go in there. But I still understand how it moves faster because it seems that they queue up all the cars. You know, now it's busy there, they back all up. And now, by just adding this other one in there, it's just going to, they stall, like, it seems like they stall. I went to a couple of other locations. I believe one of your other locations, if you guys still own the one at 250 and 441, is that yours?
Uh, yeah, I believe, yes.
You know, it just seems that they back up more, you know, they're not really moving them. And so that's why I was wondering why, you know, because what they're doing, they're getting up there faster because you've got two lanes, but then they still have to file in back to one lane, correct?
They do, but what it opens up is, instead of having, you know, 10 queued up in a line, you got another, probably another lane for another three vehicles, right? So you have two ordering at a time, pretty much. And once they get the orders queued up, they can get the food out faster instead of having them, one person order, then they wait, then another person comes in and order, and the line is still, you know, really long. So it's my understanding that that's how it works.
Now, so if they're queuing back the vehicles, you got two now, drive-throughs. I saw one the other day, drove through the one up in Aroniquay, they probably had like 13 cars. And they actually finally blocked that lane. Are you going to have enough room on the outside of your new drive-through to accommodate people that want to get out of there now?
Yeah. So we still have the 18-foot wide, well, really 20, 25, 24 feet for the main drive aisle. So if they do end up queuing up on the inside lane, people can get by and get through. You have the exit lane to the south and the circulation lane around, around the site, around the south side, too. So it does add, you know, right now, we have, when you're on there, 10, 11 in the queue. To queue up that same, you're back, you know, you're back to the handicap parking spaces. Now, if it's really busy, you can have two or three more and still not block as many parking spots or in that area. So you have potential to be 11, 13, 14, and still be operational.
Okay. You received the PRC memo? You just haven't gotten back to us, correct?
Correct, yeah. Sorry about that.
No problem. Okay. So we're just waiting on your responses for that. What about landscaping? You going to do more landscaping right in that?
Yeah. So there's more, a little bit more landscaping. I believe it's in the same island. So that basically, probably about eight feet of the existing southern curb island and a little bit within the new island as far as landscaping. Right now, they're proposing some washstone, but a lot of times, the owner-operator will look at doing some manuals, planting beds.
Yeah. We like the additional, you know, green space if you guys can dress it up a little bit. We appreciate it. Okay, I'm good, Nate. Thank you.
Okay. How about green space calculations? Are you, where is it now and what's the proposal? Are you losing, how much green space are you losing? Is it still within the?
Yeah, we're really not.
Volume.
If you look at existing conditions, I don't know if you go back, demolition plan, I believe. Who's running it?
Oh, I got the truck.
Sorry.
So the, I'm trying to see what are existing.
So really, we're.
You're really adding green space?
We're adding green space. Yeah, we're taking away, as you can see in this. And then if you eventually scroll back to the other, we're bumping out the southern curb line a little bit, adding in the island, and, you know, portions of those become landscaped areas. So it's not a huge change, but it is a little bit change in the green side, friendly side.
Okay. So when I look at the landscape plan, just drawing C4.
Yep.
That, to me, looks like there's pavement all the way to the southern border, whereas the site plan, is that just striped pavement that is proposed there?
Correct. And it is today. It's pavement all the way.
Those are parking spots today, right?
But they're parking spots, yeah. Right now, there's no, it's really delineated just by striping between properties.
So would you consider potentially turning those into curbed, you know, planting beds and putting some shrubs in there? Dress it up a little bit?
We could. If, we've got to make sure we can get our truck through there. They do have a semi-truck that has deliveries.
Those deliveries?
So we'll have to check that. I don't think it's, usually, we'll put the footprint on here, but, or the turning movements.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think they are, but we'll double-check that. I'll note that.
Any new lights? Any change to that?
Um, no. The only, the only thing we're adding to the site really is the menu boards, some, I don't think there's any major lighting. No site lighting changes. It's really going to remain the same.
So what about, any changes in where you're going to store snow?
Um, no. That should not change. Today, I believe they push it either to a corner of the parking lot, into the landscaping on the north or the south. I can confirm with them on that process and get back to you guys.
And they, but I don't know, they have an idea of the current, I'm going to call it a queue number, but how many vehicles could be in the drive-through queue? And what is that today versus, it looks to me like there's 13 cars in the drawing here.
Yeah. So we have, you know, the opportunity, I think there's, there's at least seven, and then it goes back to eight, nine, 10. So we have 11. You can fit another 12, 13 before you get to the parking spaces. My understanding is, based on their operations, that this will be more than efficient because basically, if you take one, two, three spaces, add that on to the end, plus during peak times, that additional three, it wraps all the way around the building. So with this layout, it will help reduce the congestion near the handicap spaces or near the front of the building.
So do they evaluate these types of improvements based on average time per transaction through the drive-through?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
And what is their anticipated reduction in time? And what is it today? What do they want it to be and what do they think it's going to be?
I don't know those exact numbers. I can circle with them and provide that to you, but either way, it's going to cut down on the queuing time and the order time. What, if it's five minutes, two minutes, I can get you those numbers, you know, based on what the operation.
Yeah, it's more curiosity than.
Yeah.
And then this might be a stupid question, but if, how do they know which car ordered the, you know, 10-piece McNuggets and which one ordered the Big Mac? If they're, you know, two windows next to each other.
My understanding is, I believe they have the videos. They can see what color the car is, for example. And they kind of, as you get up to the window, they typically ask, did you order this? If they're off, then, you know, they'll check the other order. So it's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you. Questions?
I just have a question. Can you explain again? So what's the new window? Is there just one window or will there be two, like it is in typical drive-throughs where the customer pays at the first window and then goes to the second window?
Yeah. My understanding is that there's going to be a new window, I believe, yeah. So there's going to be a new window up closer to the front of the building. And then this new window, they have a set distance, and it's roughly 46, basically two cars in between the two windows. The old window operation, they couldn't keep two cars from paying, you know, picking up your order, have a car in between, and then you have your back window. So that's giving them that opportunity.
Okay.
Yes, they're going to have two windows, a pay and a pickup, so.
Okay.
Anymore?
Nope.
Bob?
Yeah, you had mentioned deliveries. Are the deliveries done when the store is closed or can that occur during business hours?
It can occur during business hours. Typically, they schedule during off-peak times. Typically, they'll pull off to the side, block a couple of spaces, unload their truck, and then move on.
So with the added lane, that's really not changing the delivery flow other than, you did mention the new drive just being large enough for the truck to get around?
Yes. So the way it's designed, having that extra 18, 20 feet, the truck can circle around the building and get out. Typically, they will queue up on the west side, the wider side, where it's 24 feet to allow cars to get by if they are doing deliveries.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
All right. Would anybody in the audience like to speak to this application? Downstairs, correct me if I'm wrong, but do I have Ed Linsskog from 40 Will upon Way? Trail Committee.
No, that was last week.
Okay.
Wrong, yeah.
All right. So we don't have any callers coming in. Nobody in the audience would like to speak to this? Any other questions from the board?
Okay.
It's a pretty straightforward application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And.
We'll address the PRC comments and any other comments that comes out of this meeting with us.
Sounds great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. With that, that ends the public hearing portion of our meeting this evening, and we will go back into work session mode.
I'll take care of that.
Should we take care of, do you mind if we take care of K2 quick?
You may.
Okay. Let's, this should be.
Yeah.
Quick. Hopefully, everybody's gone out there. I know I've talked to all of you about visiting and feedback. Town board is seeking our input on this. We're not approving or doing anything. And I know possibly all three of you have some comments that we'd like to put in as bullet points in a letter to the town board. I don't know, Kelly, if you want to go first?
Sure. So I visited the site yesterday, and I do understand that K2 does need the additional parking because it is always very crowded there. And it's a great location for them. And my concern with the parking lot, it's not really a concern, it's just a comment, is that, you know, is it realistic to think that people will drive up the road and sit and wait for a shuttle to come and pick them up and bring them back? And, you know, with the addition of all of these extra spots, the shuttle would literally have to be driving back and forth constantly to, you know, bring people back and forth from the parking lot to K2. So that would just be my one comment. And then you'll have people that, okay, so perhaps they're there on a really, really cold fall day, as you know, we have here in Rochester, and are they going to stand outside and wait for a shuttle to come or are they just going to start walking down the road? So those would be my comments.
Terry?
Yeah, just a couple of things about the, yeah, I think it's a, you know,
Yeah, just a couple of things about the, yeah, I think it's a, you know, good project, it's a great place, doing a nice job down there. My only thing is we want to make sure that road gets repaired, whoever's responsible for it, I'm not really sure if it's K2 folks or Dr. Howlett. So we want to make sure that gets taken care of. I'm sure the Town Board's aware of that because they did at least one site review that I'm aware of. And then the incentive zoning, make sure that we get that covered. I know that they were working on that, all parties involved and who's responsibility that will be to take care of any concerns. DOT has an Empire Boulevard for the safety of, you know, people entering that location and leaving. That's it for me.
Bob?
I had a couple of comments. We want to be sure, I know there's going to be lighting on the site. We want to be sure that they're at the appropriate levels for safety. And second, my understanding is the parking is just for K2. And if that's the case, I had a question whether that parking lot, I know there's just one area for entrance and exit. If that parking lot is going to be closed, if it's going to be gated or chained during off-hours?
Okay. Myself, I don't have an issue with this. I think that you could potentially, I guess, question the costs involved, all these other things. But I suppose the owners of K2 have created a vibe or a mojo for that location. And they feel that it's, in order to keep that versus risk moving somewhere else, they're going to try the parking lot. And with it being stone, I don't see any harm in doing that. So I'd say overall, as a board, from what I'm hearing, other than if we could put bullet points in the comments that the members have made, we don't really have any real issues with it, right? So does somebody want to make a motion to send a memo to the Town Board?
Tidings, make the motion.
I'll second.
You didn't even try.
No.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay. Thanks, John. Let's go back to Arbers, and we have the applicant here. Recently, they have submitted some redesign, altered plans that I'd like to give Ralph an opportunity to explain. If you want to come on up to one of the tables and kind of explain through the changes.
Thank you.
And the thought process and you know what to do.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to explain what we are submitting to the board this evening. Based on our past work sessions with the PRC and meetings with the board, we took a step back to look at more closely some of the concerns that the board has raised and staff has raised, and came to some conclusions that we hope will be in a positive direction to address all of those concerns. The first one was to look at the board's request for lighting of the multi-use trail, especially in front of those townhomes fronting on Route 250 and Atlantic Avenue. The second was to take a new sharper focus on the, what we might consider the downtown portion of the property, which is the stretch along the dedicated road where the vertical mixed-use buildings occur. And realized that we missed the boat a little bit in terms of our previous trail configuration and that we really didn't route the trail down into that area. We missed an opportunity to create a synergistic environment and business for those non-residential uses on the ground floor of those buildings. Felt that that was an important change to make a refinement to the trail system. So comparing the previous trail system, the original one, to what we're showing this evening, we've taken from Route 250 and from Atlantic Avenue and routed the trail through that section so that we've got multimodal capability, bringing people, both residents and visitors from off-site, to the non-residential uses in those vertical mixed-use buildings. We think it's going to create a more dynamic environment for those non-residential uses and for the neighbors as well as our residents. The other thing that we looked at was the safety factor that we realized when we took a closer look at the grading in the area of the stormwater management facilities, that predominantly those trail locations are at the crown of, or the top of the pond slope. And although we know that we're meeting DEC regulations in terms of the design and the stepping of the slope within the ponds, it doesn't preclude the fact that some people who might be wheelchair-bound using the trail or young, very young children on bikes could find themselves in that water. And we wanted to try to look at eliminating that possibility. So that's part of the reason that along the west property line especially, we've removed the trail and repositioned it through the dedicated road section and the portion that begins at the tennis pickleball courts and goes by the community building. That gives the, still a direct route for people from the, what we've called the stubs of the trail at Route 250 and at Atlantic Avenue to all of the recreational open space and amenities on the site. The other thing that we looked at was the portion of the site that's development zone C at the north end against Penfield Center Road. Those eight single-family detached units are a pretty private portion of the site in terms of the quality of the residents. And with that, the board may recall that we've pretty much left the remainder of that portion of the site in its current state so that the trees, the orchards that are there now will remain. It's going to be a very private setting for those eight homes. We are still leaving the sidewalk there, a five-foot concrete sidewalk, in lieu of the 10-foot asphalt trail that we are going to put there, which we think is going to make those homes more desirable for people who are looking for a more private setting than the remainder of the development. The other factors that came into our thought process in making the recommended changes is that we heard back from New York State DOT that they're going to restrict us in all of our entrances along Route 250 and Atlantic Avenue to a maximum with the 15 feet for the entry lanes. That pretty much knocks out the capability for us to have a bike path in the pavement, which is what we were looking at previously. So to compensate for that, it made sense to us to continue to have the sidewalk converted from a five-foot concrete sidewalk to a, in a north-south direction, it'll be a 12-foot concrete width. In an east-west direction, it'll be a 10-foot, consistent with the requirements of the mud manual. The other couple of minor changes that the board will probably see is that our north entrance at Route 250, previously, we showed the trail stub on the north side of that drive. We've shifted it to the south side of that drive because it will align with the trail location that we're proposing for the 25 acres, not part of this current application, but in the future, because the north property line limit of the 25 acres falls short of the, where the north stub would have been on the 73-acre site. Similarly, we took the, a more focused look at the grading along the south end of 250, somewhat south of the storm detention pond there, and we weren't able to make the grades work due to the existing topo on the exception parcel to the south of us. We couldn't do that and still have an accessible slope for universal design on the trail at that location. So we did go back to our original location for that connection to the exception parcel. We did also make a direct connection from the trail along 250 as it heads south back to the dedicated road system. That is the first intersection, when you come in from Atlantic, it's the first intersection on your right. We've increased that sidewalk also from a five-foot concrete sidewalk to a 10-foot concrete trail. So that we, again, from both ends of Route 250, as well as at Penfield Center Road and Atlantic, we've got connectivity for the trail at, I think, a total of at least seven locations. The other objective we had was to try to balance the economics of the construction of the trail, its length. We still have 9,043 linear feet of trail in the alternate plan that we've presented, which is about a mile and a half, a little bit more than that. And with that in mind, we were able to balance the economics. We still have a significant cost increase from what we were originally looking to do, but we're going to be able to light the entire trail with 16-foot poles so that we were able to accomplish the objective that the board and staff had asked us to look at in terms of being able to have the trail lit throughout. And that's, of course, in addition to the street lighting.
Right.
And I think we've covered all of the main points as to why we've made the proposed alteration and refinement to the trail system. I think it really does improve the viability of the non-residential space in the vertical mixed-use buildings that are such a key portion of a true mixed-use development. And it also maintains the access to all of the site amenities for both our residents and the general public. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or clarify anything.
Okay, well, thanks for your presentation, Ralph. I, personally, my initial reactions are, I love the idea that you're routing it through the commercial district. You know, as a board, we've been hammering home the importance of these districts to everybody and the, that are the odds of success. I'm all for it, as far as that goes. The other initial reaction is, you know, with it being eliminated, I understand the safety factor at that, I'm going to call it a pinch point, I guess, between the property line and stormwater management facility A. That I think is a real legitimate concern, I guess. The first, you know, reaction is, oh geez, now, you know, how am I going to do a two-mile walk? But you take about 30 more seconds and you look at this, and there's plenty of routes that you can take to do a nice circuitous walk, ride, whatever. So I think it's a positive change.
It may not appear graphically, but the net reduction in the length of the trail is 18%. It goes from 9,043 linear feet to 7,465 linear feet.
Yeah, still, still a nice walk.
Yeah.
Other comments?
Good, thank you, Ralph.
I just have one question. I think it looks fantastic. I also like the, taking it through the little commercial section also. But with that said, is there going to be any source of lighting around that stormwater management?
I'm sorry, around the stormwater-
Around the water, the pond, yeah.
We will have some security lighting, yes.
Okay, that's perfect.
We just didn't want the trail to be too inviting. The west property line being common with the gun club in particular, and then a portion of a private residence. The more we looked at it, we thought it wouldn't be prudent to invite people into that stretch.
I think that's great.
Thank you.
The, you mentioned the 16-foot poles, and I assume that's, the fixture is the same that was proposed earlier? Kind of that top hat?
It's very similar, Bob. There's a cut of it on the photometric plan. It's hard to see, but it's the exact same style, it's just a different manufacturer.
Okay.
It actually is a little bit more energy efficient, which is the reason for our change.
Okay. Now, I think the, I think it was a really positive change. It really makes a lot of sense-
Thank you.
-to do that. And I think really for this project, that was really the remaining major issue on the property. And I'd ask, I guess, staff for, are we satisfied with, or do we have any questions on the landscaping plan?
No, I think we've been comfortable with that. So this was another one that staff has been working on, finalizing secret documents and drafting an approval resolution.
Can you bring up the landscaping plan quick?
While she's doing that, maybe you could comment on the, I guess, the landscaping concept. Street trees?
It'll be a combination, yes. I should point out too that, although the board didn't ask about it, when you look at the dedicated road as it goes through the vertical mixed-use building stretch, the way that we were able to increase the width of the sidewalk there was that it's, the sidewalk that you previously saw had running along with it a stretch of pavers. So we're not reducing the green space, the planting beds in that area. We're simply expanding the concrete in that same dimension. And we're respecting, because of the emergency access for aerial ladder fire trucks, we're maintaining the same dimensional distance separation of 15 to 30 feet at all points so that the trucks can have the access that they need to from the fire lane.
Okay. The trees and shrubs and, I mean, I'm looking at this, I guess, the detail of the landscape plan, and that's indicative of pretty much all the various locations?
Yes.
Common?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, and we addressed, I think, snow storage. We're good with that for the parking areas? There's just some things I wanted to, just kind of came to mind. We have an understanding on the trash receptacles on the site? How that's going to be handled?
Yes, we've gone through that. So the more traditional residential, the townhouses, duplex, triplex, quadplex will have toters. So it'll look a lot like, you know, your, our neighborhood. So it'll look a lot like, you know, your, our neighborhood streets where everyone brings their totter out on garbage day.
Right.
The apartments will have internal dumpsters, and there is a dumpster enclosure for the, dumpster enclosures for the community building and the vertical mixed-use buildings.
And then the last item, I know some meetings back we discussed, and I don't know if there's been any more discussion, Ralph, with charging stations for common areas and possibly for folks that have garages. I think you indicated that you were at least going to look into, see what that would involve.
Right. We will likely have a charging station or two at the community building location so that it's accessible to everybody. We're, at this time, not making provision for individual charging stations at every unit.
Okay. So I just have kind of a...
That's specifically for Phase One, just to clarify.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that as we go forward, we won't modify that depending on demand and affordability.
So if, on this project, if somebody had a garage spot and they wanted a Level 2 charger, would there be a method that management could have one installed in the unit at their expense?
The honest answer is I don't know, Bob. I'm happy to look into that, though.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll check that.
So you wonder if there's either conduit run behind the wall in the garage or something in a, would it be a single gang junction box? Or is it much more substantial?
A square four-inch, something like that for a Level 2. And I think by the time you ran the conduit, you might as well run the number eight wire and just maybe not terminate it, just have it pre-wired, you know, something like that.
Yeah, we'll check it out.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, concerns? All right. So this was submitted, I think everybody should take a little bit of time and just digest it. Thanks for making the changes. And we're in the midst of preparation of our approval documents.
Yep, I'm finalizing the secret documents and drafting an approval resolution. I should have that to you hopefully here shortly.
So if everybody's comfortable and we have all that ready to go, maybe we can try to work on that for the work session coming up in two weeks.
Okay.
So in the meantime, I guess we're continuing tabling.
Yeah. So I'll move that we continue to table and, I guess, revise the tabling resolution. I know there's, you're working on ultimately a approval resolution, but the points with that, like we discussed.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right. Do we have anything else?
That's all I had for you guys tonight.
No way.
Wow.
7:45? Whoa. All right, thanks, everybody, for coming, and we stand adjourned. Have a great weekend.
Do anything for McDonald's?
Public hearing tonight?
Yes, McDonald's.
Yeah, let's... Any initial comments, Terry, start?
No, I don't have any issues with it. I think, well, you know, once we, you know, get their responses back, we'll be in good shape. So just, unless somebody else has got some issues, we'll just table two.
Yeah.
Then we can start the resolution.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they, if they would be open to putting in some landscaped islands instead of that striped area, if a truck will fit around. I mean, I get that and I understand that. It would be kind of nice if we...
So one comment that staff made in the PRC was, one was doing that as a landscape, but was also flipping the orientation of them to have that north-south access lane be on the east side, you know, the drive-through side as opposed to the west side there. Staff had some concerns that folks coming in from, you know, cutting across, especially if you access the site from Creek Street, anybody coming generally from the east will. You can sort of dive across the Key Bank property, come in, try to jump into the drive-through. So we thought it would be cleaner to move that access aisle to the east. That way, if you come into the site, you have to go and you have to wrap around the building. Gives you more queuing. It sort of cleans up that corner. But it was a recommendation of staff that they include that as a landscape island, something staff is looking at is on the site. They show those as being the approximate property lines. There is some concern looking at green space. I don't have accurate calculations. I have sort of a rough calculation. That would have the site as designed not meeting green space requirements when the site was originally approved back in, I think, 1988.
There was.
It was done as one property under Baytown Plaza. At some point after that, it got subdivided out, so it is its own separate parcel. You know, looking at it as its own separate parcel, you know, staff is, and I'm still in discussion with the zoning administrator, but staff is looking at it that the site should have to stand on its own merits, not be able to base itself off calculations for a plaza that it's technically no longer on the same parcel as. Instead, it's something we're looking through and we're calculating, it was one of the requests in our PRC memo was that they provide either a survey map as part of it to indicate accurate property boundaries with an accurate green space calculation based off of what they're looking to do with the modifications. Because right now, our rough numbers have them at like 85-ish percent, or 80, 85 percent lot coverage. But we're, I'm basing that off of approximate property lines and not accurate survey lines.
Okay, so basically, as we got to do is table it, depending on the response, because that's all in the PRC.
Yeah, so we're going to take a look at that if we need to, if we need to recommend that they go to the zoning board for a green space variance. It's something that we can work through with them and make sure that we can still get them moving on, moving forward.
Okay.
All right, so...
Just want to table it at this point. Tidings tabled.
Motion to table?
Motion to table, please.
I'll second.
And do you want to include in the tabling the suggestion for the landscaping?
Yes, we can do that. Yep.
Okay.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Just one thing on, I guess, circling back to Penfield Heights, we're waiting on their height decision based on the zoning board. And I'm wondering if we should send a memo to the zoning board just saying we're in favor or we like, you know, we don't have an issue with the height risk variance. Want to do that or not do that?
I think that sounds good.
Yeah, well, I think that's what you were talking about initially anyways.
Yeah.
So I don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem either.
Okay, so...
Letter of support.
Yeah, a letter of support. Letter of support for that? Yeah, I'm all right with that. So does somebody want to?
I'll move that we send a letter of support on... The height variance? Yeah, the height variance. For the height variance. No, I was trying to remember the project.
The name of the project. To the zoning board?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Now, we can adjourn.
Yeah.
And we stand adjourned. Have a great weekend, everyone. Thank you for your participation this evening.